...to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, thank you again for another glorious day to be here. Please be with this board as we make the county's decisions and give some direction for our continued growth. And Lord, please be with our citizens out there, whoever's struggling or at a loss. Please give them strength and encouragement. Let them feel your love and glory and move towards you. And Lord, please be with our public safety and military. Keep them embraced in your arms of protection.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Board members, we have one item in the bullpen for potential amendment to your agenda. It is the appointment of Michael Lieber to the Healthy Generations Area Agency on Aging Board of Directors, and that would be in addition to your consent agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Skinner to approve the agenda. Mr. Yakubowski?
Aye.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Aye.
Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Skinner?
Aye.
Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Dr. Trampy?
Aye.
Chair, aye.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next item is public presentations. Amy, has anyone signed up?
No, sir.
Is there anybody that did not sign up that wishes to speak now?
That Mr. Chairman will go to the consent agenda.
Oh, excuse me.
Yes, ma'am.
I know, I'm short.
And the yellow light comes on when you have 30 seconds to sum up. The microphone goes off when the red light comes on. Please state your name and voting district for our record.
Sure. Dawn Napper, Lee Hill District. Good evening. I am disheartened to hear some of you gentlemen at other meetings say if raises were important to the school system, they would find the money for it. Gentlemen, you've level funded us for so many years, and the state government and health insurance companies has raised mandates and premiums that the school system has no extra money for raises or many other needs. You can't get blood from a stone. You insisted the schools participate in the Evergreen Study in the hope that school employees would come out overpaid. I have an example for you, the only one I can use. I am a 12-year veteran teacher with a master's degree, and I make $49,000 a year. One of my teammates is leaving Spotsylvania for Prince William. This is her third year teaching. When she starts there on her new job next year, she'll be making $50,000. You readily found the money for the Evergreen Study for county employees, as you should have, but now it is time for the same treatment for the school employees. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that did not sign up for public presentations that would like to speak now? Seeing none, we will close public presentations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have your consent agenda. May I have the floor computer, please? Tonight's consent agenda is as follows. First is approval of minutes from the February 27, 2018, board meeting. Second is the appointment of Tom Welsh to the Economic Development Authority for a term that expires March 31 of 2022. Third is the approval of three contracts to multiple firms to provide business consulting services at an aggregate annual cost not to exceed $150,000, one-year term with three optional one-year renewals. Item four is a business tangible property tax refund to Christopher Wayne Burns, trading as Burns Plumbing. This is to adjust for amended returns, $5,970.41. Item five is a grant application request. This is for the FY 2018 Virginia Dam Safety Flood Prevention and Protection Assistance Fund for the Motts Run Dam Break Inundation Zone Analysis, Mapping, and Digitization. Total estimated cost is $45,749. The grant would cover $22,874. The county and the city of Fredericksburg would each provide match of $11,438. Item five is the additional item, the appointment of Michael Lieber to the Healthy Generations Area Agency on Aging Board of Directors for a term that expires December 31 of 2021. That is an at-large position, and that is your consent agenda.
Does anybody want any of these pulled? Can we get a motion? Mr. Skinner?
I'll make the motion to approve, but can we have a discussion on it? One thing, please, on the dam, on the Motts Run? Is this something that we're doing because it's on the safety precautions to check the dam out, to make sure everything is working okay? Or do we have a problem and we're trying to fix it?
No. We are doing the inundation mapping. There was a change in regulations, I believe, in 2015 to 2016 that required a different storm event to be mapped for downstream inundation mapping. We've done some of the storm development, but now it is time for us to do the inundation mapping. At this time, there's a grant available to help with that, so we thought we would apply for the grant.
Is this something that we would be doing four or five years down the road again? Or is it something that... Or is it all run by the state?
Actually, right now, the dam is due for renewal. This certificate is due for renewal. That's what allows us to operate the dam. In order to get a new certificate, we actually have to complete the mapping and submit that to the state.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You okay?
Yeah. Fine, thank you.
And your motion to approve? Motion to approve by Mr. Skinner, Mr. Yakubowski, Mr. McLaughlin, Mr. Ross, Mr. Skinner, Mr. Marshall, Dr. Trampy, Chair's aye.
Brings us to board reports, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Yakubowski?
No report at this time.
Mr. McLaughlin?
No report.
Mr. Ross?
Just have a quick question for... Who does our street cleaning? Is it Spotsylvania County or is it VDOT?
Ed?
This morning on Route 3 during rush hour traffic, there was street cleaning blocking the lane of Route 3, and I was just curious as to why.
We don't have any street cleaning, Mr. Ross. So it would either be something that VDOT was doing, or if it was like close to Central Park, it might have been the city.
It was by BJ's, by Heatherstone Drive.
Yeah, that would have been VDOT.
Okay. I'll follow up with him. Thanks. That's all I have.
Mr. Skinner?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Could we check on... There's a position in DSS, I believe. Gail, maybe I'll explain a little bit better. It's called CPMT, and I believe Gail said it was vacant, and I'd like to at least ask if I could be appointed to that board. I don't know. We'd been going back and forth originally. We thought Chris was on it, but Chris has the aging, I believe, in this one. Gail, if you could step up just for a second, please?
What I'm referring to is the mandatory board, the Community Policy Management Team, the CPMT. This is the policy body that oversees the operations of the Children's Services Act, the CSA operations within this locality. And the Children's Services Act is a combination of court services unit, DSS, the schools, the Health Department, and the Community Services Board.
Yeah, I thought I appointed one of you to it, but I don't have my notes here on who I appointed to what. Did you check with the deer?
No, I did not. I did not.
We may want to check with the deer first, just to verify...
Well, it's the point... Yes, I agree with you. I will be happy to check, but do you have anything, Mr. Cole?
I don't have the vacancy list with me, but it's... According to the previous minutes, Chris Yakubowski was appointed to it on January 23.
Yeah, that's fine with me if y'all want to switch or whatever y'all want to work out.
Want to resign from it?
They need some youth on there. I have no problem being on there. I'm sorry, I saw an email that had gone by, back and forth, that said I wasn't on it. So that's... My assumption was I was on the area agency on aging, which I've shown up to their meetings, and they have a name card for me, so I guess I might have one.
You're good to go. Okay, thank you. You just want to make a motion?
To... For what? I mean, do you want to switch or not switch, but?
I'd make a motion to appoint Gary Skinner.
Thank you.
In your stead?
In my stead, yes.
All right. Motion by Mr. Yakubowski for Mr. Skinner to serve on the CPMT Committee. Mr. Yakubowski?
Aye.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Aye.
Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Skinner?
Aye.
Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Dr. Trampy?
Aye.
Chair's aye.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. That's all I got. Thank you, Mr. Yakubowski.
All right, Mr. Marshall?
A couple things. First off, just like to make the announcements and a thank you to Chief Cullahan and his staff. We now have 24/7 ALS availability throughout the county at all 11 fire stations. That's big for the Berkeley District because we were lacking in that department. I'm glad we've got it. Appreciate you making the changes to get that for our citizens. Also, as we get into the board retreat, I would like for the board to have a discussion on far as setting a schedule and a time slot for the school board and inviting them to attend at a selected time during the retreat to discuss some of the different budgetary items for the future of Spotsylvania County. And on the last thing I have, April 18, 7:00 p.m., Mass Polynice High School. I will be hosting a joint town hall meeting for the Berkeley District with myself and Ms. Grant for all the citizens to come out and to attend, voice any concerns they may have.
All right, and Mr. Taylor, could you make sure that we get the school board request for the retreat? Or at least let us know how the schedule is going and see if we can work that in?
I have a note, Ms. Chairman, and that could make a discussion item either this evening or at your next meeting, as the agenda for the retreat is currently, from memory, I have... I believe I have three notes. One for discussion of strategic plan. Second for a discussion of space needs and potential construction or rehabilitation of buildings to meet county space needs. So this would be a third item on the agenda for a day that has been set off, as I recall, for 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And these are, I would think, any... Perhaps with these three, might I respectfully suggest consideration of the suggestion that the agenda be closed? Or I'm concerned about the adequacy of time, frankly, given the magnitude of issues presented, but it is the board's retreat. I just want to raise that flag out of concern for the process.
Mr. Marshall, do you think... I know I've wanted to invite the schools back during the year several times. Do you think it would be... Would you be able to do the same thing with like a joint meeting between the two?
I mean, I would be fine with, you know, scheduling joint meetings, two or three a year. If we could do them quarterly, even better. It helps us work better if we're all on the same page.
I agree.
So that's what I'm looking for, is for us to have a just kind of level of playing field, so we both have the same goals in mind and what we're doing. Makes everything operate smoothly.
I agree. And why don't we do that, Mr. Chairman? Just really sure that we would request that we have a joint meeting, at least one or two more before fall, just for open dialogue and discussion with the schools.
We'll look at the calendar for quarterly and send a communication suggesting the calendar layout.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Trampy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to initiate a board discussion to see what everyone thinks about the possibility of adding a meeting to our agenda next Tuesday, April 3. We have some big decisions to make on space for social services, on the animal shelter, and on changing the financing of health benefits for over 65 retirees. And in an ideal world, we wouldn't be making these decisions in the crunch of the budget season, but that's when they've come up. The actuarial results just came back on the healthcare piece, and I don't feel that I'm ready to make a decision on these things yet, and I just wanted to ask the rest of the board if you feel an extra meeting would be helpful.
I can speak for the chair, yes. I'd be supportive of it. I think as much dialogue as we can have on some of these items, they're going to be critical in the near future. I mean, we're going to have to make these decisions, and the more dialogue and communication we can have with each other on them is, I'd be, I'd say, critical. Anybody else? Mr. Ross?
Yeah, I concur.
Anybody else? You can make the motion if you want, Mr....
I'll go ahead and make the motion that we schedule a meeting for April 3 at 6 o'clock in this room.
Motion by Dr. Trampy for an additional meeting on April 3 at 6:00 p.m.
Just a point of clarification, Mr. Chair. This will be a special meeting of the board. This isn't a moving of any regular meeting. Those will still occur. This is a special meeting, just a point of clarification for procedural reasons on the Virginia Code as for advertisement.
Yes.
So, Mr. Chairman, could we either invite an amendment to the motion or a second motion to... Imagine, Carl, the suspension of the bylaws would be necessary because they call for the agenda to be published today by close of business for a meeting to be held a week from today.
You can't get them, though?
So... Let me text Nick. So we would need...
Call it a special meeting.
It's a special meeting. It certainly doesn't hurt to clarify that the bylaws requiring anything for a regular meeting do not, you know, otherwise apply or otherwise suspend it as far as, you know, the agenda and things that are normally required of staff for that meeting in the bylaws. I think that's certainly an appropriate substitute motion.
You'll just add on?
I amend my motion as Carl described.
Yeah, so that we can set the agenda. I understand you want to discuss, I guess, the CIP, retiree health benefits, and whatever.
Yeah, I guess, well, the animal shelter and the space for social services are both CIP items.
Yeah, okay. So, but those are the... Those specific parts of the CIP and the retiree health benefits.
Right.
Those are the two main things.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Motion by Dr. Trampy for a special meeting on April 3, 6 o'clock, with our bylaws suspended. Mr. Yakubowski?
Aye.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Aye.
Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Skinner?
Aye.
Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Dr. Trampy?
Aye.
And Chair's aye. All right. I guess the Chair's board report. I'm just going to... I just wanted to make some statements. I guess first would be, or the only one, should be on the SROs. Been trying to decide whether I was going to say anything or not, but I think I will. You know, we've gotten three quarters of the way through this budget, and I don't even think the public really knows that we're now being asked for to add 15 SROs to our budget by the Sheriff's Office. Neither the schools nor the Sheriff's Office has made this a priority, and I'm just very concerned that we're doing a lot of backdoor discussions and moving on this topic instead of actually researching some of these shootings and the true causes and, you know, I won't say most, but there's been quite a few of these shootings that have been students within the schools. It's not an outsider coming in. I know Sandy Hook was, but his mom taught there from my understanding of it. But there's a whole lot of issues here, and I've been getting emails from parents wanting us to do something, and it's... To be quite honest, I don't really think it's our decisions to make as a board here. It'd be for requests from the schools and for them to come forward and put it as the priority. You know, there's other concerns also that I have that, you know, we're not even looking into private security, or we're making very quick emotional decisions that I just don't think... I think we need time to absorb and to analyze, you know, the true needs and where they need to go. I know the schools can probably do some security improvements with the schools themselves. You know, there's a whole 'nother kink into our budget, so when we, you know, like I say, three quarters of the way in here, and we're being asked for even more personnel. And nothing has been really said publicly where folks can make comments and a presentation from the sheriff where the schools can be done. I've heard nothing from either. So, just comments. That's it. We'll move on.
Mr. Chairman, under board reports, there was time set aside for discussion of location of the board's upcoming retreat, and four no-cost suggestions floated, being the Marshall Center Teen Senior Center Room, the Lick Run Community Center, Spotsy Volunteer Company One Training Room, and Merchant Square, third-floor Conference Room. All of those county spaces would accommodate the retreat.
Mr. Chair, I think I had actually mentioned Station 3. I don't know whether it could be worked out to the chief or not.
That's right, you had, Mr. Chairman. I apologize, I didn't have that on my note.
But that would give... I know that there's... Has been discussion about a new station for that, a replacement for Station 3, and that would be a good opportunity for all of us to get to view that station and maybe the needs for another replacement for it.
Right, and that is...
But that's up to the discretion of this board.
For those who don't know, Station 3 is just a bit below Snell, right, Mr. Marshall?
Yeah, by 12 miles.
So, I would like to see that used if it can be... I know it would probably inconvenience the firefighters and EMTs there, medics, in their daily training and work, but I think it'd be ideal, an ideal opportunity for this board to see it. Mr. McLaughlin?
Mr. Chair, on that note, that's a good point, but maybe we should have it at Merchant Square, then we can all walk the Merchant Square Building and make a decision about social services taking over that facility, and everybody can walk the different floors and see if that really fits the need, and that's more centrally located for everybody.
Any other? Mr. Marshall?
I agree with Mr. McLaughlin. I'd like to see it at the Merchant Square Building. While I would love to have it in my backyard, I don't think the Fire-Hairs Apart Lo would accommodate us. We'd have to move... We would have to move trucks outside and have to have it in the bay. It would be tight.
Okay.
By all means, it would be... It's doable. Well, I mean, we can... But it would be very uncomfortable for the folks.
Okay. Any other discussion? Any other suggestions? Want to make a motion? Or do we need to make a motion, or just an agreement, a nod that Merchant Square would do it?
Happy to proceed with a concurrence of the board if there are no other ideas.
Procedurally, I would recommend that you make a motion and do other vote for setting the location, as it will be again. It will be a special meeting of the board. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to conduct a special meeting of the board at the Merchant Square Building on...
May.
May, during... May 12th, from 08...
Eight to two.
Till 1400 or 2 o'clock. Is that good?
Amy said I don't have to repeat it. Did you get all that? All right. Mr. Yakubowski?
Aye.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Aye.
Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Skinner?
Aye.
Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Dr. Trampy?
Aye.
Chair's aye.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That brings us to public hearings, the first of which is on amendments to County Code, Chapter 21, Section 263. And treasurer is here to announce, to address the subject matter.
We'll open up that public hearing for County Code, Chapter 21, Section 263. The floor is yours.
This is needed to bring clarity between the County Code and the State Code. The proposed amendment would allow a 10% penalty the day after the due date for not filing or return of a payment that's not made. That would be an additional penalty of 5% each 30 days to accumulate to a max of 25%. The penalty is charged to the business collecting the trust tax and not to the citizen. The change will allow 10% assessment of interest per annum to be collected upon the principal and penalty of such unpaid balance. The proposed amendment will remove civil penalty language for filing a false or fraudulent return as that is a criminal violation. Do you have any questions?
Anybody have any questions? Open up public comment. Do we have anybody signed up to speak?
No, sir.
Is there anybody that did not sign up for the public hearing for County Code, Chapter 21, Section 263, that would like to speak now? Close public comments on that. Would we want to make a motion?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Yakubowski. Mr. Yakubowski?
Aye.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Aye.
Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Skinner?
Aye.
Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Dr. Trampy?
Aye.
And Chair's aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next public hearing is to allow public comment on selling pieces of real estate, tax map 4A51 and tax map 10777 to adjacent property owners. These are landlocked parcels adjacent to the reservoir.
All right, floor is yours. I guess officially, we got to open up the public hearing for selling pieces of tax map 4A51 and tax map 10-7-77 to adjacent landowners. Floor is yours.
Turn your mic on, Chris.
Floor computer, please.
Yeah, floor computer, please. All right. Staff recommends selling portions of tax maps 4A51 and 1077. The land highlighted in yellow on the graphic shown to the adjacent property owner. The parcels are 5.9 and .9 acres respectively, totaling 6.8 acres. The parcels were purchased as part of Hunting Run Construction Project and are no longer needed by the county. The parcels are landlocked and will be subject to 150-foot reservoir protection overlay buffer preventing construction near the reservoir. The county has an appraisal valuing the land at $51,000. The buyer is willing to pay the full appraised amount.
Any more? Mr. McLaughlin?
So, this is a question that I don't know whether it came on a different case or in the past on a different project, is that this land was taken from a landowner in the past or not?
It was purchased, yeah, purchased from a landowner in the past.
Do we have no obligation to offer it back to the original landowner first? And we took it, right?
Yeah.
It was a take.
The... If you look at the graphic, 4A51, I mean, they're both landlocked, so they would not be, you know, accessible by anybody else other than...
No, well, I understand that. This is just more of a question. I mean, was the original... Is the new purchaser the original owner?
No.
The... I'm not sure if we took this, these particular property by eminent domain or if it was just a purchase outright, voluntary purchase. If it was eminent domain, then the... And we decided it was no longer of public use... If it was eminent domain, then the, and we decided it was no longer of public use, I believe the code requires you to offer it to the, uh, the person you took it from, they, I think, the first right of refusal, I think.
There, there is something, I believe, in the eminent domain laws with respect to that, but, uh, again, if this was a purchase, an arms-length transaction, that requirement would not be- That's correct. But we don't know either way right now, or do we?
Well, the larger parcel, um, the one that's 5.9 acres, that was actually purchased from the Sea of Fredericksburg when we purchased a large body of property for the reservoir. 10777 actually had the deed right here. Uh, it was actually purchased from the property owner. Actually, if you look at the, there's like a red rectangle, um, that was the original lot, so probably, you know, 80% of the, the parcel's underwater, so there is a little-
But we purchased the property.
We purchased the property.
Okay, wasn't a take. But if it was a take, then there's a first right of refusal, is that correct? Is that what you're saying? I believe so, I don't have- Just, just for future- Yeah, I don't have it here in front of me, but I believe, I believe there is some, uh, requirement to offer it back to the person taken again. Just for our information, could you find that out? Pass it on to us. I'll, 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 I'll send that around to you, all the, uh, the citation.
Any other comments from the board? We're opening up the public hearing, uh, I mean, the public comment portion of this. Uh, if you did not sign up for this specific, uh, public hearing for the selling of pieces of Tax Map 4A51 and Tax Map 10777 to adjacent landowner, and you wish to speak now, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing with a public comment on this. Anybody want to make a motion?
Mr. Chair, it's a chance or so, a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. McLaughlin. Mr. Yakubowski?
Aye.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Aye.
Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Skinner?
Aye.
Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Dr. Trampy?
Aye.
Chair's eye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Here it is, public hearing on proposed amendment for real estate tax exemptions for surviving spouses of certain emergency service providers, um, killed in the line of duty.
We'll open up this public hearing for the, uh-
And just to give you background on this, there are no slides for this. It was, uh, the Constitution of Virginia was amended, uh, back, I think, a couple years ago to allow localities to, uh, offer a tax break on the real estate tax for, uh, surviving spouses of, uh, emergency services personnel who were killed in the line of duty or died in the line of duty. Uh, it's strictly voluntary. Uh, you know, uh, the commissioner has done some research, and the best we can ascertain, there may be, uh, three, uh, people in the county that this would apply to, so the revenue impact would be minimal. Uh, there may be others that we're not aware of, uh, you know, uh, but we are aware of at least three, uh, in, in the county that, that, uh, this would apply to. And this would be, uh, the way it's written now would be retroactive to when the, uh, the law was changed, or the constitution was changed to be, uh, start effective 1 January of 2017. So if they did apply, they would get a rebate, uh, and then be exempt, uh, from, uh, the real estate tax going forward.
Any comments from the board? We'll open up public comment for this public hearing for the survivor, another survivor benefit for line of duty deaths. Uh, has anybody signed up?
No, sir.
If anybody wishes to speak on this that did not sign up and you'd like to come forward, please do so now.
Good evening, Justin Langridge, President, Local 3886, and Lee Hill District Resident. I just want to point out that there are several constraints, uh, on the exemption that are, uh, perceived as reasonable in our eyes. They include a cap on the property tax amount, uh, as well as a, uh, remarriage exemption. Uh, and this is also something that's already in play for our, uh, military LODD spouse survivors, and we appreciate your support on it. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that did not sign up that wishes to speak now? Close public comment on that?
Mr. Chair, motion to approve.
Motion approved by Mr. Ross, uh, for this. Amy, you got that? Mr. Yakubowski?
Aye.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Aye.
Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Skinner?
Aye.
Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Uh, Dr. Trampy?
Aye.
And Chair's eye.
Mr. Chairman, that brings us to a presentation, uh, from FREM. See Chief Cullen in here. Uh, this regards the VFC A Health and Safety Award.
Good evening. Um, just wanted to, uh, kind of bring it to your attention, um, that, uh, our department was able to receive the, uh, 2018, uh, Health and Safety Award, um, for combination departments from the Virginia Fire Chiefs Association this past February at the Virginia Fire Rescue Conference. Uh, it was awarded actually for multiple safety initiatives and improvements, and that's actually what it says on, on the front. I'll read through some of those initiatives, but it's kind of remarkable, remarkable because in the past, uh, this award's been, uh, given for generally a department that's done maybe one of these things. Uh, so we've been able to accomplish a lot, uh, over the past year or so in, in looking out for the, uh, the health and safety of our employees and volunteers in the, in the department. First one is, uh, being able to achieve a second set of turnout gear for all of our employees, um, purchasing particular barrier hoods that, uh, help reduce the amount of carcinogens that actually seep through the, uh, the nomex hoods that people wear, basically, uh, between their face mask and their turnout gear and their helmet. Um, the installation of the vehicle exhaust capture and removal systems, uh, which is an ongoing project. Some enhancements to our annual physicals. The adoption of an operational procedure for fire ground decontamination, and additional health and safety training. And this is something that, um, we, uh, we were actually a little bit ahead of the ball. Uh, there's some additional, uh, I guess, recent legislation that went into effect, uh, requiring, um, the education of any new recruits and, and emergency services personnel, uh, on, uh, such things as behavioral health, but we took it a little step further to, uh, also inform them on occupational cancer prevention, uh, and suicide prevention. So, those were the, uh, the key programs that, uh, we received the award for. I would like to, to reiterate though, that while this award was presented to our department, this is really a team effort, uh, countywide, whether it was department staff, uh, the Career Firefighters Association, the volunteer agencies, the, the budget office, um, grants, procurement. Uh, we would not have been able to achieve, uh, many of these, uh, projects and the success of them without everyone's, uh, teamwork in that, as well as the board, uh, for providing the funding for several of these projects, as well as, uh, agreeing to, uh, apply for the grants that, that funded some of them. So I want to say thank you and just kind of present the award and let you see it. Not sure if you wanted to pass it around or, or if we wanted any kind of photo op for you, but, uh, just want to say thank you.
A photo op would probably be worth it.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Congratulations, Chief. Bonnie, I'm sorry, but that applause was not for you. But it is time for our budget work session.
Mr. Chairman, you can go ahead and read our statements.
Yes.
Can we go ahead and start?
Go ahead.
I hereby disclose I have an interest in the budget transaction as an employee of the county. My disclosure is on file with the clerk and is available to the public for review. Mark, Amy, please record this disclosure in the minutes of this meeting as required by law.
All right. I hereby disclose I have an interest in the budget transaction as a retired employee of the county. My disclosure is on file with the clerk and is available to the public for review. Mark, Amy, please record this disclosure in the minutes of this meeting as required by law. Thank you. Thanks, Ms. Marshall.
Thank you, and good evening. So usually, as we get to this point in the budget process, we have a number of known budget updates that we need to report to you, and that is my intention tonight. Um, so these focus on the general fund. You should know that there are somewhat similar, um, updates, the same types of things, um, applying to the other funds as well, but since we tend to focus on the general fund, I'm focusing on the general fund tonight. So on the revenue side, the real property projection that is in the, uh, recommended budget was based on some preliminary assessment data that I got towards the beginning of January. Obviously, since then, there have been some updates made by the assessment office to that, and as a result of those updates, I feel like the, uh, real property projection in the budget can be increased by 225,000. Additionally, we've been alerted to the fact that we have received a grant, um, for funding related to tech, the text to 911 initiative that was requested in the budget by the Sheriff's Office. Um, that item, because we knew we were requesting the grant, was not in the recommended budget, we now need to make adjustments to account for it in the budget that's to be adopted in April, and that is $30,375. In the, um, general fund, there is also a component of this project that is in the capital projects fund as well. I have recalculated, um, some information related to the transfer from code compliance to the general fund, and that results in $5,808 additional to the general fund. And we, um, have revised the litter grant downwards, um, in terms of revenue by $504 based on the litter grant award in fiscal year 18. So overall, revenues are increasing by $260,679, $260,679. And on the expense side, we have some adjustments we need to capture as well, the largest of which certainly is the capture of salary and benefit changes that have occurred since September. We ran the numbers, we ran the personnel and benefit numbers, um, that are in the recommended budget in September. Obviously, changes have been made since then, and that's about $144,000. Also, um, in the compensation adjustment, the, the meeting, the meeting, where, um, the board took action to, over the course of the next three years, adjust, um, adjust salaries by the compensation adjustment numbers as well as the COLA to match each prior year's annual CPI. Um, the annual CPI for 2017 was not available when we did the recommended budget. We estimated that annual CPI to be 2%. It is in fact 2.1%. And so the adjustment, um, needed to capture that, if we are to stick with, um, what has previously been planned, is $58,000. And that is just on the general fund side. Each fund that has personnel in it has its own corresponding adjustment, and you're going to see in, on the next slide, that that will also impact the schools as well. Adjustments to the base budgets for various departments is about $52,000. Um, that's just some corrections that need to be made to the base budget. I also revised the calculation of the excess tourism revenue reserve. That is, um, again, we get, um, transient occupancy revenue, 60% of that has to be dedicated to tourism, and that money goes to pay for things like the tourism budget, the museum budget, various pieces of the economic development budget, um, and then we have to reserve anything that's not spent or planned to be used in a given fiscal year. That amount for fiscal year 19 at this point is about $51,000. Just like we have revenue related to the 911, uh, text to 911 initiative, we also have expenses related to that, and those two match intentionally, $30,375. Also, the final request from the jail was $45,290 less than was included in the recommended budget, so we're accounting for that here. And again, matching the expenditures to the revenue adjustment for the litter grant, that's a reduction in expenditures of $504,000. Overall, total general fund expenditure adjustments are a little over $290,000. And when you put those two pieces, the revenue adjustments and the expenditure adjustments together, we are at this point $29,771 short in the general fund. So, as we move forward, we will obviously need to work that shortfall into our, any scenarios that are done for the adopted budget. Um, I mentioned that the, um, the COLA adjustment from 2% to 2.1% will impact the school's budget as well, and that impact is $54,597 as shown there on the bottom portion of the screen. That brings the school's total shortfall up from 1.9 million to about $2.1 million. Uh, now in a bit of departure from what our normal course would be, normally, as I started off saying, we talk about updates, known updates to the budget, and we tell you about revenue changes and expenditure changes that I just went through. But, um, I do want to make sure that we call your attention to two topics about which there've been a lot of questions and inquiry, and I want to make sure, um, that the board sees presented in a very clear way the various options and costs that are related to the ALS fire staffing options and the SRO options. Um, we previously provided the information for, this slide is about the, um, ALS and fire staffing positions. The next slide will be about the SROs, so let's take each one in pieces. We previously provided you information related to scenario A and scenario B on this slide in response to budget question number 53. The fire chief has communicated to county admin and to budget staff that if necessary, it would be acceptable to fund 11 of the 21 positions for the full year, followed by funding of the 10 additional positions beginning in January 2019, or half-year, for fiscal year 19. Splitting the hiring into two groups would lessen the financial impact in the first year, but would also allow fire and rescue to conduct two recruit academies of more manageable size. Also, it should be noted that the fire chief intends to request, um, that the 10 half-year positions be funded in fiscal year 19 through the SAFER grant, and that is going to be an upcoming request to you all, um, at a future board meeting to authorize the application of that grant for the 10 half-year positions. So just to, just to be clear, I'm going to go through each one of these. Um, scenario A is that all 11 stations would be staffed on a 24/7 ALS and fire-staffed basis. In each one of these scenarios across the board here, $343,000 has been included for six full-year positions within the recommended budget. If we were to do scenario A, and that's, again, is all 11 stations ALS and fire-staffed for the full year, that would require 21 total positions, six of which are in the recommended budget, and additional 15 would be needed. And the additional 15 would cost about $1 million, $996,909, for the total cost of that option being the $1.3 million shown at the bottom. For scenario B, um, this was a requested calculation by one of the board members, um, that we've provided information for previously. Again, the $343,000 for the six full year is in the recommended budget, and this scenario, which is nine of the 11 stations at 24/7 ALS and fire, and two of the 11 stations at 24/7 ALS, um, that option would require an additional five full-year positions at $358,000 for a total cost of $702,000. Scenario C, which is the one that I just talked about, where the fire chief has said that to achieve cost savings in fiscal year 19, we could have 10 of the 21 positions be half-year, and he would apply for a grant for those. Um, you see there, the additional five full-year, $358,000, and the 10 half-year would be $331,000 roughly, and that $331,000 would be applied for in a grant. So, that option, option C- So that option, option, scenario C, less the grant, is $702,000. Moving on to the various...
Hold on a second. Anybody have any questions on that, as far as the fire side? Mr. Skinner?
Just a quick one, Bonnie. It's my understanding, too, is that in scenario C, it's really, it's easier to handle that type, if I'm not mistaken. It's easier to handle that for the chief as far as training and everything. Is that correct, sir?
Chief, come on up.
Yeah, because I'll probably have some questions before.
Yeah, okay. So I guess, if you'll just explain, because instead of grabbing them all at one time, we're splitting them up, and it's easier to train and probably a better quality training.
By splitting those in half, it allows us to have a more manageable academy. We're currently carrying about nine vacancies, so we would add those nine into that academy. And we've still got a few months throughout the rest of the year to see if any additional add to that. So trying to maintain a more manageable academy in the area of 20 to 25 people, it becomes much more overwhelming, more labor-intensive, if we added those 10 on there at the same time.
And one last question is, if, for some reason, the SAFER grant didn't come through, we'd be looking at 330, about 331,000 to come up with to continue the program? Is that from this chart?
Correct. If we were not approved for the grant, and just in full disclosure, the 330, about $331,000, the SAFER grant is a matching grant, so we would have to pay, have a 25% match of that for the first two years. After that, it covers 35%, so I think we would have to cover 65% of that in the third year.
So we'd be down a little over 80,000? Okay. That's all I have, Ms. Chairman. Thanks.
Anybody else? Mr. McLaughlin?
A quick one, chief. And I agree with you, splitting them up, because you still have nine vacancies, and you're going to hire potentially 11, so you have a class of 20. My concern is if you try to hire 30-plus, then the quality, you know, you've got a bigger pool to pull from, and, you know, to try and find 30 qualified firefighters, a little harder. So I think it's better, in the long run, instead of trying to hire 30, 40, 50 people at one time, spread it out, because I think you can get a higher-quality firefighter out of it.
It will actually probably be all the same hiring process. So we actually just held part of our test, testing process the other day, so we have, I think, 96 candidates moving on to the next portion of that.
Good. Thanks.
Anybody else? Chief, I've got a couple of questions. I guess, you know, I think a lot of it started with Mr. Marshall with the ALS. Mr. Marshall was pushing for ALS 24/7 in all of the county, which I 100% agree with. And I know Mr. Marshall and I attended, and not to put your name in it, Mr. Marshall, but I attended a meeting with you and the volunteers, where that was pretty much sold to them, and I think accepted that that was a need of the county to better our services that we provide and to ensure that paramedic out there. Then it's moved to, I guess, I thought 11, where we wanted some additional coverage for fire also in these volunteers, well, I won't call them volunteer stations, combined system stations. And now we've gone to 21, and in 21, what everybody has to realize is that, that puts 24/7 fire and ALS in all stations, except for two, I think, because you'll still have a rescue there, correct? So really, it's only 10.
It would be, the full 21 positions would provide a base level of career, fire, and EMS, the base-level crew in those stations, 24/7. Basically, that is adding on to the presence that the volunteers are continuing to provide, both with fire staffing and, more times than none, a BLS unit rather than an ALS unit. So that would occur in stations primarily 1, 4, and 8, especially as the area in 1 and 4 continue to grow, and 8's not very far behind. This is an effort to build capacity into the system, basically to staff additional units out of those stations where we have multiple units sitting there, but not the crews necessarily respond out on a regular basis.
All right. Well, I just, and not to put you on, I guess I'm putting you on your spot, but I don't mean to, I hope you know what I'm trying to say. But, you know, I have not talked to any more of the volunteers, or we have not had any more, at least on my end, where we've talked about putting the 24/7 fire in those stations that they normally staff at night. I guess what I'm asking to tell the public is basically, why are we putting the fire, 24/7 fire, in these stations when the volunteers, at least up to this point, have been able to manage it?
The amount of staff that we have been providing up to this point has basically been a bare minimum to provide an A-fire unit and A-ambulance out of each station. So if you start looking at system management with the capacity that we have, there is still an overwhelming pool of units into the more populated area of the county. So it actually pulls additional units from the surrounding districts into, really, the, kind of the Formica Fork area, as well as the Route 3 area. So as we build capacity into our system, it disrupts the rest of those districts, so you can continue to have a firing unit available for calls in Company 1's area, or not pulling additional units out of the more rural portions of the county, which have to travel much further distance, not only to respond to the calls that they would in someone else's district, but also to get back to their own district, provides that. So this is building capacity into the system to be able to handle the increased call load. One of the examples I give a lot is, we opened Station 11 in an attempt to pull off a significant number of calls that Station 4 was experiencing. 4 is the Mass Ponics or Formica Fork Station. And since we opened 11, it did pull off a significant number of calls, but the call volume in that district for Company 4 is almost right back up to where it was to start with. So the growth, the call demand, is continuing to increase at, really, an exponential rate, rather than just a gradual rate that we had seen previously with the population. Already this year, we've responded to 500 more calls than we did this time last year. So we've seen a routine increase of about 1,000 calls per year over the past five years. Now we're seeing that much in what will be six months. So as that call volume continues to increase, we need to have that capacity there to deal with it.
Isn't most of that call volume EMS?
It's really a mixture.
Okay.
So, as well as, if you look at how we respond to calls, and I know you're familiar with this, but for the general public, we don't just send an ambulance out for EMS calls. So a lot of the more life-threatening calls, whether it's a chest pain call, difficulty breathing, unresponsive, some of these, the overdoses that we're seeing a lot of, we not only send an ambulance, but you also need that additional staffing there, the personnel for the fire crew, to help with the manpower, not only just, you know, moving patients, but also providing that ALS team care. It's not just about having one or two people there.
Okay. Now with the, I guess with the staffing you have, if we gave you just the ALS, is it your belief that the volunteers could still provide what they're providing now?
That is my hope. A lot of what we're doing is to continue to provide a base level, I'm not going to call it a safety net, but a base level of service that provides greater flexibility for when and where our volunteers can serve their time to the county. We've actually had somewhat of an increase in participation from our chancellor volunteers at both Company 5 and Company 6, which hadn't seen volunteers for several years, where they've got greater flexibility to staff a unit during the day, and that provides additional capacity during the day for us, if they staff an ambulance from time to time. There's, on a pretty frequent basis, we run very low on ambulances during the peak times of the day, and that really runs from about 9:00 in the morning, 10:00 in the morning, till about 10:00 at night. And we run very low during those times, so any additional units that we can have volunteers come into our system and build the capacity, our citizens are in a much better place.
It's great to hear that we're actually getting into the combination system. I know it's been a long, long time coming. So I guess, I'm trying to just ask some hard questions here, basically. If we gave you the, if we give the 11, which basically gives the ALS, covers all that instead of all the manpower you've had to pull to accommodate us on this, and it will give you five, basically, a cushion of five, where if, by chance, another station was not going to be able to be covered by the volunteers, you could have staffing for it.
Yeah. It would provide that base level staffing, and this, I don't want to make it about the volunteers not being able to cover, because they have been.
Okay.
And it's my true hope that they continue to do that, and we serve alongside each other to do so. This is more about being able to make sure that we have the capacity in place for that additional call volume, to be able to provide the level of care uniformly throughout the county, but also be able to main some additional resources in those areas of higher call volume. So it hopefully builds the entire system up, strengthens the volunteers, giving them greater flexibility of when they can serve the county. But it builds capacity, rather than just trying to maintain A-fire, our fire unit and EMS unit.
Okay. And I, there's no doubt that it's inevitably, and it's just inevitable that you're going to need this personnel. With the budget, it's just my, trying to find the funds for everything. And if we can do, you know, this is just Greg speaking, if we can do 11 now and then build into it as we need, you know, these three stations won't be any different than any of the others, as far as pulling pieces, and basically, these three that we're building on to for greater service. Instead of leaving a million-dollar truck sitting in the bay that could be used, we could actually pull both pieces of equipment.
Absolutely. And that's really, I mean, that's part two of a three-part discussion, is we have invested a lot of capital over the years into some needed tools, being the, you know, what we call specialty apparatus, whether it's the heavy rusty squads, the aerial apparatus, one we just approved, had a contract approved last meeting, I think it was, meeting before, for replacement Tower 1. Historically, crews have had to jump off of one piece of apparatus onto another one to take it to the scene. And Murphy lives in Spotsylvania.
Yes.
And ultimately, when you get to the scene, you needed the other piece. So anytime we can include the volunteers in this mix, that's why I'm looking to build capacity, because if I can get career and volunteer personnel staffing those stations, similar to what we're trying to do right now with this change of schedule that we made effective yesterday, we're able to get those resources out the door, get them to the citizens who are in need much faster to be able to impact their situation in a much more positive way. We are still very spread out, even though it seems, you know, especially if you think about where we came from, as far as the number of stations to where we are now, we are still fairly spread out geographically across the county. And as, you know, fire continues to grow faster, as we build more homes and equip them with furniture made out of all kinds of plastics and hydrocarbons, those fires grow a whole lot faster. So if I can get more people on scene in a more timely manner, then we can affect the rescues, we can hopefully save more property, and ultimately save the county taxpayers much more money, not only on their own property and their lives, but also their health insurance, potentially their property insurance.
Okay. Well, I'll just let you know, and so it's recorded on camera, and there is no question. I support the 11, and I would support the SAFER grant if we can get it, or however we can get from that. But at least with my budget, working through it and the numbers and trying to, you know, balance tax rate with needs of the county and stuff like that, I'm not at the 21.
I'll tell you, I don't envy any of your positions, because there are a lot of very valid requests coming to you this year, and we saw that the SAFER grant as being an option of a way to maybe lessen that burden on the board when trying to identify those priorities, but still move forward with that initiative that we're trying to pursue.
Well, I'll let you off the hot seat unless somebody else has a...
Mr. Chair.
Oh, here we go. Mr. Marshall?
Well, I had one quick, well, actually, two quick questions. With the 21 positions, would there be any increased costs far as parking and accommodations for that personnel that you would foresee?
I don't. We know with the current schedule change that specifically, the station at Thornburg, Company 8, has some limited parking areas. What I was discussing yesterday with both, some of the career staff that was there, as well as the volunteer leadership on both the fire and EMS side, was the potential removal of a standalone fuel tank that's there. Now that we have a lot more access to fueling stations, whether it be the Coral Facility right there at Mass Ponics Church, or one of the local, I think Thornburg Shell may now be a Coral Station. So we've got access to additional fuel sites now that that fuel tank may not be needed anymore, and that could provide additional parking spaces on that side. So it really wouldn't see any cost, other than maybe a removal of the tank and painting some stripes.
And the, also, one other question with the 21, would that give you the second ALS unit at Company 6 and Company 4?
That would. We've, to, to put the staffing schedule in place that we put into effect yesterday, we had to pull additional personnel from other stations. So the 11 personnel that we're looking at for July, six of those personnel are to put those positions back in those other stations, and some of those positions would be the second medic unit that's there for peak times for Station 6.
Thank you.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Mr. Chair, not generally, Chief, you're good. Just in general, so I always want to, like to point out at budget time, that this is not our money. This is the taxpayers' money, and it comes from the taxpayers' pockets. So when we increase taxes, you're taking it out of, we're taking it from a constituent in Spotsylvania, and we're determining how to spend it vice them. So a couple of things I want to point out about what I've seen as we look through this budget here, you know, I think public safety is probably our foremost responsibility of the government. Okay? Here's an opportunity now that, the calls that I'm getting from constituents right now are public safety, 24/7 ALS is what they're demanding, or that's what they want. And of course, now we have, there's a new stress or another demand on school security. And we did talk about, in the, and again, this was before the school built their budget, there was no, really no school security necessarily built into that, but now I think we have an opportunity to potentially make some adjustments. And as I looked at the budget, you know, in the school's budget, which is the bulk of the county's funding, so I mean, it's important when we look at it. So it's not an attack on the schools, it's just how do we prioritize things? When you look at the budget they presented, in implementing the Evergreen Study, it was a 4% pay raise for the next three years for the teachers, which is pretty significant. It also included hiring 120 new school employees over three years. Couple of things I want to point out, you know, we are primarily federal government, military, those that support those positions. So the military got their biggest pay raise in five, six years now, 2.4% planning. Last year's 2.3, the year prior is 1.3, and the two previous years are 1% each. So our men and women that are in combat today are getting far less pay raises than our county employees or school staff, which budgeted. The other thing, and you look at the federal workers, too, they get something mirrors that, very close to that. And I'm not even saying, you know, once we appropriate the money to the schools, how they spend it, that's fine. I'm asking at this point, that we look at, if the, all the schools have to do, the Mr. Taylor's budget increased last year's record school budget by $3 million more in recurring money. If the schools relook at their 120 members over four years instead of three years, that'll give us enough funding to hire the 21 firefighters and the SROs, because I think that's where the priority should be. Because I was looking at what the schools want... schools want to hire right now. And I'm not saying that they're not the right place, you know, they're not needed, they're not, should be hired, but we're talking assistant principals, administrative interns, instructional technology. And so there's some occupational therapists, I'm sure they're all needed, but can we spread those out over four years vice three? And if we do that, just that one thing allows us to fund all twenty-one firefighters, puts twenty-four-seven ALS in all the fire stations, and allows us, you know, with option three, converting the dare officers and hiring SROs based on this, that one-point-seven million between those two funds is what it will cost, will save by spreading the hundred and twenty school employees over four years vice three. That's, I think, what we have to look at as a compromise between the two budgets, the school's budget and the county budget, to get the, you know, the, the county residents what they're asking for today, and that's ALS, and that's SROs in the school. I'm not saying the school, you know, the original budget, they may have put those folks in there before this last school shooting, but now they're an opportunity to make the correction. And what I'm recommending to the board is that we make that correction, is that we ask the schools to spread that over four years vice three, hire the twenty-one firefighters, and hire the, the SROs to pop, you know, to populate the schools for security, because that's the demand I'm getting from the constituents. And again, it's not, right now, the priority shouldn't be on PE teachers and signing assistant and a Gateway Academy and some of the other positions I talked about. So that's one of the things I want to point out, we have to be, look at the big picture. Our, our constituents aren't getting pay raises like this. And I'm not even saying the school should take that pay raise away. Four percent, it's in the budget, they can do it. But I think just spread those hundred and twenty over four years instead of three, and you can make this budget work, without overburdening the taxpayer with tax increases. Because don't forget, we increased taxes two years ago, and everybody had a reassessment this year where their tax, a lot of the assessments went up. So they're going to get a double whammy when you sit there and raise their taxes and a higher assessment. So I just want to point that out. Thanks.
Anybody else? Bonnie, I got a question for you, Mary.
Yes.
When we, I don't know how to start it really, as far as numbers, when we take employees and only either partially fund for a year, what does that do to our, the start-off budget for next year? Do you know what I'm asking?
I do. It causes us to need to find that other half of the year, or other fraction of the year that wasn't found in the prior year. Yes. So if we have a position that is all-in salary and benefits, that costs a hundred thousand dollars for a full year, and we put fifty thousand in for half-year in fiscal year nineteen, we've got to come up with another fifty thousand dollars to fully fund that in fiscal year 2020.
And basically dealing with the same, if we don't change the tax rate, basically change, dealing with the same monies for the most part.
There.
Unless there's changes in.
Yeah, there is some natural, on a normal, regular cycle, there are natural increases, some natural increases in real estate and personal property taxes. What that's going to be for 2020, I can't tell you at this point.
Okay. All right. I may have some more questions for you, at least to send you some emails on some.
But one more thing, tho- those, finding the funding for the full year instead of the half-year in 2020, that would be one of the first things we did off the top of any new revenues.
Okay. All right. Oh, Mr. Yakubowski, sorry.
Sure. Are we finished with your slides?
I have, I have two more slides.
Okay. No, because I had a budget scenario I wanted to pass out to the board, so we can discuss that one when you all are finished.
I'm almost done. We've already talked about some of this, the SROs.
Well, and in fact, slide six steps right back to Mr. McLaughlin's comment about the newness of the community concern with school security in the wake of, of national events. That, that top line is zeros, because the recommended budget had, and contained no recommendation for additional SROs, because there were no additional SROs requested, either by the sheriff or by the school division, when the recommended budget was put together. So those zeros should not please be taken to reflect any indifference in the slightest, it's simply that the item, SROs, was, had not been identified as a priority by the, by law enforcement or by, or by the schools. Now, I understand with national events, the, the situation is somewhat changed a week after the Florida shooting, then there were communications about the potential for funding one or more SRO positions. And Bonnie, forgive me for interrupting, but I just, I wanted to explain the zeros and tie this back to Mr. McLaughlin's comment.
Okay. Thanks. So you've previously seen options one and two in response to a budget question. And just yesterday, after some conversations with the sheriff's office, the sheriff's office has communicated to the budget staff that it would be possible to convert the four existing dare officers to SROs, and instead of hiring a total of fifteen new, we could hire eleven new and have them, in complement with the four dare officers, fill out the elementary schools.
Hate to interrupt again, but Mary, thank you very much for that suggestion. Great idea.
So the costs related to that third option are shown in the far-right column. And you can see, obviously, there is a difference. At the bottom, I, I want to note here, I just put this here for, for your reference as you're building your budget scenarios. One SRO costs, including a vehicle, one thousand, excuse me, not one thousand, one-hundred-and-twenty-two-thousand-five-hundred-and-three dollars, and that is for the full year. You're going to see that option two, which we've already responded to in a budget question, and option three assume that those employees are hired in September, and the sheriff's office has said that that is doable for them. That actually gives them time to go through their pool of people and determine a, a good candidate for these positions. So that one-twenty-two-five-oh-three is for the full year. If that, if those positions were to start in September, that number goes to one-ten-three-oh-four, including a vehicle.
Any other questions for the board? Mr. Skinner?
So the sheriff said that he can do eleven in September?
Yes. Four already exist as dare officers. And he's saying add another eleven in September for the full fifteen complement.
So the dare officer is required in, in the schools?
Yes.
So are, are they dual-qualified then, is what you're going to say, they're qualified as a dare officer and as a SRO?
They aren't now, they will be. Yes, if thi- if this is the accepted option, they will be.
Okay. So actually, what, he's training seven?
We're training eleven.
Eleven?
We're actually training eleven to be dare officers and SROs, and we're training four who are already dare to be SROs.
So he's finding seven people. He's already got four dare officers, which he knows of, that he doesn't have to search for.
He's finding eleven. They need a total of fifteen. Four exist, they need eleven more.
Oh, so, okay. I wish he was here, because I didn't understand that. I thought he was doing more of a, also, seven in September and then possibly seven, six in January, from my discussions with the department.
Okay. I, I haven't heard that.
That sounds more like what is, is talked about in option two. This option three, we just talked to them about yesterday.
Dr. Jeremy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The tragedy in Newtown, Connecticut took place in December of 2012. How many SROs have we added since that time?
We'd have to check, check on that.
Yeah.
I don't know the answer either, but I think it's quite a few. Now, I know that they'll say that, at the time the sheriff made his budget request, the tragedy in Florida hadn't happened yet, but the tragedy in Connecticut took place over five years ago. Newtown was a grade school. Florida was a high school. Our high schools are already covered by SROs, and I believe our middle schools are as well. My point is, there is no reason to think that this need suddenly occurred out of nowhere after Florida. Coming this late in the budget process really puts us behind the eight ball, and strikes me as a CYA effort by the sheriff. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Marshall?
I have a question on the option three on the slide.
Yes.
The four dare officers that we currently have, do they already have vehicles?
Yes, they already do.
So that one-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand for vehicles, we could cut four vehicles out of that, correct?
In every one of these options, the sheriff has assumed five vehicles being purchased initially, and then keeping existing patrol vehicles longer, and phasing those into the new positions. So each one of these options just assumes purchase of five vehicles.
Okay. I was, I was thinking with the difference in personnel, we could save some money there on that option. Okay, thank you.
Did you want?
We do have just one more slide, and it's our typical.
I did want to make a comment too on this SRO stuff. Sorry, Bonnie.
No, you're good.
And sorry to belay the whole ordeal here, but again, I'll make these comments about the SRO. This is coming in three-quarters of the way through the, our budget session. I still have not heard personally, or nor seen the sheriff here to do any kind of presentation to us for about the SROs and this change in priorities, other than I did see an email about changing his public relations person, I think it was, to a floating SRO, which I, I'd agree with, absolutely. You know, some of the, you know, I think some of the things we need to do first is make sure the SROs are in the schools all day long. You know, instead of going off for lunches and vehicle maintenance and training and all this other stuff, let that be done on days that school's not in session, and have them eat school meals right in school, that they're either there. If you want to build camaraderie and the rapport with your kids, that's where you should be. I can't tell you how many times I go by schools and there's, there's no SRO to be found. Matter of fact, I toured four schools the other day. The vehicle was there, but in all that we went throughout the school, now whether they were just fixated in their office or not, but I did not see one SRO walking around, meeting us, greeting anybody in the hallways, anything. You know, I, I, there has no been, nothing, no kind of presentation from the sheriff as far as his change in priorities and what is the need. There's been no discussion or investigation on the, the possible use of armed security and the benefits or negative impacts of that. There's been none of this. We're having somebody tell us that SROs is the only absolute way to do this. You know, I want to know what they're going to do all day, other than greeting elementary school kids in the morning and making sure they're getting on the bus in the afternoon. I mean, I just, you know, I'm very disappointed that we have not been briefed in public about this. I'm sure a lot of the public, if, the ones that pay attention to these meetings, I'm sure they have noticed, they have not seen anything brought forward to us in public and discussed. You know, I don't, I don't want a bunch of, you know, emotions being played on us as a board. And yes, we, we love our kids, we care about our kids here in Spotsylvania, but is this the best way to do it? You know, I've heard a whole lot of other things about metal detectors, film to prevent, you know, Kevlar coated film, I've heard all kinds of things. And then the three people that have contacted me from the Livingston District, two of them mentioned school resource officers, the other one did not at all. So, you know, a hundred-and-twenty-two thousand dollars for an SRO compared to what they could possibly contract for security, armed security for elementary school, I mean, it's something that we need to look into if we want to be responsible in, for our taxpayers' monies. You know, there's been no explanation of why, why it can't be anything else, and why anything else can't be used, either for or against. There's been no debate whatsoever. And it really sickens me that we're going, we're put, being put in this position, behind, backdoored with the budget, no public presentation to us from the sheriff. I, I don't like it. I'll just leave it like that. Sorry, Bonnie, I got on a rant. Go ahead.
Just the usual last slide here of next steps. And obviously, a, a big reminder for everybody at home, certainly we're aware of this, is Thursday night at six-thirty at Mass Aponics High School this year, there will be the budget, budget public hearing, tax rate public hearing, and CIP public hearing to start at six-thirty. At five-thirty, county department personnel will be available with displays and other information that may be helpful and useful to county residents. And at five-thirty also, budget staff will be available to answer questions about the budget. April fifth is the earliest date for legal adoption of the budget. April fifth is not a planned or advertised budget workshop session, but it has been on the calendar as a point of reference. Again, it is not an official advertised meeting at this point. April tenth is the budget work session on the budget, and then we're hoping to get your general nod of approval on the CIP that evening as well. And then April twelfth is the date for which the budget adoption is scheduled and adoption of the 2018 tax rates. And that is our last slide for the evening.
Mr. Yakubowski, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm going to pass to my left here, and if you all can take one and pass them down. Sorry for the lateness of this, but as we see, the budget scenarios do all change constantly. And this is a suggestion, I would like to thank other members of the board who have put forward their suggestions, because what this is, is a collaborative event that we need to, we need to come together on, and we need to find out what the answer would be. And over the next several meetings, we will be discussing how we meet the needs of our community. So basically, my proposal here is for the tax rate to be at eighty-four-point-one-eight, and that can be adjusted as we move things out of the, of the proposal here. And what that does is it increases sheriff's department request with four communication officers and four communication operators for a full year. Some of the parts of the budget that were left on the table from the county administrator's budget. The sheriff has changed one of his positions to a floating SRO. My budget scenario also proposes seven SROs, and as we've seen this evening, we actually could probably change that around a little bit with the, with the dare officers. The other portion that this adds to is the, I'm sorry, I'm trying to read it too. The positions for economic development, there's a special projects manager, and the reduction of the concealed carry permit. The SROs were not in the budget, yes. That's, that's obvious, and we all know that. The discussion that I think we need to have is, are we going to speed up the process of hiring SROs for the school system or not? If we, if we decide that we're not going to do it, I'm not going to, I'm not going to slack off my responsibility and say, well, you did not ask for this. I, I point out constantly to this board, because one thing is left out of the scenario that I'm going to bring up, that the transportation budget is not a responsibility of our board whatsoever. But yet, we're spending millions upon millions of taxpayer dollars out of the general fund to do these transportation projects. Those dollars could go to the core services that are needed, but yet, we don't do that. We spend on transportation with no discussion about the impact on the general fund. One of the other parts of my budget scenario that is not on here, my apologies for that, but I'll be more than happy to provide it, is the removal of transportation funding that will be taken out of the bond referendum that had nothing to do with the bond referendum. There are two proj- well, actually, three projects in that, that if we need to do that, should be cash funded. Number one is a Route Three bumpouts for roughly two-point-five million dollars that we're going to put on the credit card. Another one is a roundabout in Andorra Drive that is roughly one-point-five billion dollars that we're putting on the credit card, too. When we proposed the bond referendum in 2014... When we proposed the, uh, bond referendum in 2014, there was a list of projects that we were going to do, and we always put on there or other, uh, projects as we see fit, which is, which is fine. I mean, that's, that's, uh, something that we do. If those things were so important at that time, they should be put in there, but they weren't. Those combined are about, uh, four million dollars or so that we are using bond re, uh, revenue to do. I propose that if we want to do that, we pay cash for those, or we put out another bond referendum. The other one that I would take out is the Bloomsbury one, but I would propose that we do pay cash for that, because the county does owe that, or, or, own those, uh, roads, and we do need to make those right. That is a, um, an issue that was brought up and, and, um, uh, created long before this board was ever seated. So if we were to do that, we roughly save about three-hundred thousand dollars, or thereabouts, in, uh, debt service that we need to, uh, come up with. Because I'll remind the board again, in four years, we're going to be looking at a roughly three-point-eight million dollar transfer, again, out of the general fund to fund transportation projects that we are currently putting in our CIP, currently approving, and currently spending that money. When that bill comes due, how are we going to find those funds? We roughly, I asked our financial team of, a couple months ago, or maybe it was weeks, I don't know, it all runs together at this point. But roughly, how much do we bring in per year in new revenue to the general fund outside of the, um, allocations that we must make when it comes to our fiscal policies? And we roughly bring in anywhere from six to eight million at the, at the high end. You take out three-point-eight million out of that number for salaries, school transfer, fire and rescue, sheriff's department, everything else that we need to do. And we're not looking at that. And in my opinion, we need to be looking at that, and we need to take a, a closer look in how we fund the core services that we truly need. I think that SROs are needed. I would like to do it in two years. Personally, I'd like to do it in one year. I, you know, i- i- is it the sheriff's responsibility? Is it the school's responsibility? You know, we, we can do what we've done for years and point about other entities and it's their responsibility. Well, I for one am going to step up and say, "We're going to do it, period." I've talked with the sheriff, I have talked with the school system. They prefer SROs over armed security, and, and a presentation is fine. There's, I have no problem with them presenting that to the public. But the SRO, uh, program has worked in our high schools, it has worked in our elementary, or in our middle schools, and it's time that we accelerate having them in the rest of our school system. When you take a look at the additional money that is required to do all of this, you're talking about basically, uh, two-point-five pennies on the tax rate. Couple of years ago, we did set the tax rate two pennies above the equalized rate, and we were able to do an awful lot, that we continue to benefit from that tax rate. So I think that, uh, the discussion that we'll have from here on with the next one, two, three, at least three more board meetings that we have, will be good ones. I invite all ideas, please, let's have a, a ro, a robust discussion about what we need to do and what our priorities are. But I wanted to lay out that my priorities are public safety and stepping up and getting it done, and getting it done this year. Thank you.
Any comments from the, Mr., uh, Dr. Champion, sorry?
Uh, Mr. Yakubowski, does your scenario include the three-cent cut in the personal property rate?
Is that the original?
It was in the county administrator's-
Right, I have not touched that.
Thank you.
Mr. Marshall?
Just for some clarification, when I'm looking at, uh, Mr. Yakubowski's, uh, scenario here, the, and I, Bonnie's here, so she probably just more of a question directed to you. The transfers to the school to match the request, I had the number at, uh, almost two million dollars, one, uh, one million nine-nine-eight. This, this has it at one-point-five. What is, what is that actual number? What is the, the school's request?
The school's request is this one-nine-nine-eight-eight-three-five.
That's what I had, yeah, okay.
And, and in Mr. Yakubowski's scenario, he is funding one-point-five million of that.
Of that, okay.
Yes.
Okay, so it's not a full?
Right, it's not a full funding.
And actually, it's more than that, isn't it, Bonnie? Didn't we, in our-
It is slightly more than that. After tonight's presentation, it is, because of that change from two percent COLA to two-point-one percent, it's two million fifty-three thousand four-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars.
And the other, other question I have, Mr. Yakubowski, for your scenario, the, uh, the adding of one floating SRO at the mid-year for FY 2019, is that from the shortfall analysis document that we received from the sheriff's office?
Yes, sir.
I, I have that number of being, uh, thirty thousand, uh, seven-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars for the partial year funding for that.
Well, yeah, that would, that would be a partial, this, this would be, um,
Full year.
Uh, the full year, yeah.
Okay, instead of a half year, it would be a full year then.
No, this, this is the full year, and this includes, this includes a vehicle.
Okay.
The thirty thousand may not have included-
The shortfall analysis we got didn't have the vehicle included, then.
Okay. And, and I think that that, to be honest, I think that that calculation was incorrect that was on that, on that, uh,
Okay.
memo you received.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Mc-
Okay, yeah, all right, thanks. Real, real quick, and, and, and I, just kind of touch on what Mr. Yakubowski said about, um, paying cash for projects and why are we borrowing money, and I agree. You know, we make the, if we make the determination to move social services or expand social services in the Merchant Square building, we potentially save nine million dollars in cash that we would have spent on a building. And, uh, I, I know there's a road in here, down on, is it on Lansdowne? Lansdowne, it's a million dollars, the road's in the city. So there's ten million dollars of potential savings that we could pay cash for a CIP project, when I think it's about ten, ten percent roughly? I mean, we get like a-
Roughly, yes.
Yeah, so if we spend ten million dollars, we don't borrow ten million dollars, it equates to like a million-dollar recurring-
Roughly, yes.
-we put back in the budget. So there's another million dollars that we could apply towards the budget just by paying cash instead of borrowing money. So I agree, some of those projects, Mr. Yakubowski, we should pay cash for if we have it. And that's kind of the idea, but we're sitting on a fair amount of cash, and I think if we make some good decisions on future, like the, the, uh, social service, which is probably one of the nicest buildings in the county right now, and then, uh, take the road project out of there and some of the other ones that are probably not really required right now, that we could better spend that money on, instead of borrowing it, paying cash for projects and using that money to keep our tax rates low. Thanks.
Mr. Ross?
Is, is the, is there also one-point-four million dollars for the animal shelter set aside in case that bid comes in higher, or is that not in our budget? I know that's one of the things we're going to talk about next Tuesday.
Yes, we still have in our budget the, um, the total seven-million-dollar budget for, um, the animal shelter.
And that, and that's a one-point-four increase from what's already been approved?
That is, over the course of two years, uh, two, two-point-two beyond what's already been approved.
Two-point-two, okay.
And I, and I want to be clear when I say that, I'm assuming that the million dollars that you already approved when you added the scope of work is, is budgeted. It is not budgeted. That million dollars is not budgeted right now. So the total that's in this budget over the next two years is three-point-two million dollars. One of that was approved for the additional scope of work.
Thank you.
Mr. Skinner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I, I just want to, you know, everybody's saying what the priorities are, and of course, I agree with everybody. I think the ALS, okay, it's got to be a very top priority in the SROs. Now, whether or not the schools have, uh, asked for SROs, uh, you know, I, I don't know. It's, we, if we remember, many years ago, we had the sniper, and many people thought that we, it wouldn't happen in Spotsylvania yet. I mean, we were, I killed one and wounded another one, okay? And it can happen, and whether they want to step forward and say, "We need those people in schools," I, I think we should follow through with the ALS and the SROs, because just as in the military, I don't think you ever put a price on a life. And I've seen many, and I think Kaizen and Marinko will know that we've seen, uh, children die before their parents. It's not a, it's not a good thing. It's just, it's, it's not good. So, um, with Mr. Yakubowski's, uh, budget here, I do like it for one reason. It's because it looks like, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, but it's, instead of the two-point, a little bit over, uh, two-point mil, uh, million, um, we're taking a little from that money, because again, we can't tell the people, we allocate money to the schools, and they do with it what they need to, and that's their responsibility. But, uh, um, I'd love to see us go ahead and, um, support those, uh, SROs and grab it back, uh, s, from some of the, uh, the school budget. So, uh, I think that's where the one-point-five comes in, um, and I think that's the smart way to do it. Of course, we fund it through the sheriff's office, obviously, or something of that nature. And, and that way, we have a guarantee that we are going to hit our goals, which are going to be ALS, uh, and also the SROs. And, and I will agree with both of you as far as paying cash, rather than paying, you know, going into the bond referendum and stuff like that. So I just wanted to make those comments. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Yakubowski?
Yeah, uh, picking up on the, uh, social services building, uh, and correct me if I'm wrong, the eight million that was set aside for that is set aside because we really have no other funding for it. Do, do we have bond funding that we could take to build that? And so it's, it's more of a placeholder, and I, and that, that's why I really want, uh, and have, have continually asked, and I'm glad to see that we're going to at the board retreat, talk about space needs, because I, I'm not in favor of bill, just going out and building an eight-million-dollar social services building. We need to look at what the best options are that we have. And if we can take that eight million and just sort of, um, you know, put it in the budget, we still have to then vote on it later, whenever we actually do the project. So I don't think that that's a bad thing to do with that cash, but I think that, a, at least, I'll speak for myself, and I'm, not to say anybody else want to agree with this, but I don't like to speak for others, is that we, we want to get the most value, and we want to not do something that in a few years, we're going to have to turn around and spend even more money. So being fiscally responsible, I think ta, is, is taking a look at the entire picture and seeing what can we do? Because again, I don't want to go out and spend eight million dollars on an SS building that in four years, we need another one, or we need to finish the bottom floor, or something like that. I mean, we, we need to just think it through, uh, so, uh, the more cash that we can pay, the better. Uh, and I would like to see, um, uh, any other ideas that come up, because I really, I will tell you, I was really, um, me and Paul, uh, apparently every year, are the, uh, the two scenarios that get out there, and, um, it was nice to see other, uh, scenarios and, um, other people's input, because I think that when we all come together, we can really come up with, with the best ideas, and we can really put together a, a really good budget. And so, um, again, my, my budget is, is fluid, you know, it's not going to hurt my feelings if you don't like part of it, because I'm sure after what you had said, uh, Mr. Benton, you probably don't like part of it, and that's fine with me. But I think that there are parts that we can, we can agree upon, and I think that we can, uh, work it out and, um, use these next work sessions to really hammer out a good budget for the county. Thanks.
Anybody else? I just, yeah, I will agree with you on the placeholder for the social services. And, uh, Mr. Taylor, I'm going to challenge you, um, we need to take a look at all options, from folks building for us and us leasing, using their property, them using our property, building a new one, um, we need to really think out of the box and just, I know it's putting a lot of pressure on you and staff, and I don't know how you're going to get, I don't know how you get the numbers you get now, because, you know, it seems like we ask one week and y'all have it to us the next, and I commend you for that. But, uh, we need to really look at all options, and us as a, a group here, try to make the best decision for our community on what we have, you know, that you present or y'all present to us. I don't just, I don't want to just go out and make a, a spur-of-the-moment decision on something that could, uh, cost us even more in a very short term. I'll just challenge you and staff to, to come, come to us as soon as possible with, uh, as much information as you can possibly provide us.
Yes, sir, we have been, we've, we've received various inputs from the board with different ideas. We've, we've discussed them at the, uh, admin and, uh, admin level, and we're looking at a couple of possible scenarios. We want to bring forward as many options as possible.
Well, I appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I had one question I forgot to ask staff. Uh, the General Assembly did set a, uh, gas tax floor, um, for a VRE. Have we factored any of that into the budget?
I've asked PRTC to give us updated projections, and they said they were checking on it, but haven't gotten back to me yet.
Okay, so-
So our projections come from PRTC for fiscal year nineteen and the out years.
Okay, so that number will change, uh, possibly?
It's possibly, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Can, can I ask a question and follow that up? Uh, Chris, what was your question? Uh, because I'm sorry, I was talking to Kevin. On the PRTC?
The General Assembly set the floor for the gas tax. And so I wanted to see if that was factored into our budget or not yet.
Now, was it factored in? Do you know what price was factored in there? Because it's going back to the, um, two-thousand-and-thirteen rate. Were you given that?
No, I wasn't. I've asked for that information. I've asked for the change in the projections from PRTC and have not received it yet.
I'll make sure you get them tomorrow, okay? But there is, the floor was passed, correct, Mark? And it's starting in one July, and it's going back to two-thousand-and-thirteen?
Yeah, correct, and it hasn't been signed by the governor yet, but as far as I know, the governor does not oppose it, but, you know, it still hasn't been signed by the governor.
And, and that's when we're going through, when they were going through the assembly and everything, it was, uh, there were different options. There were, you know, on July first, what's that price gas? Now, they decided to go back to two-thousand-and-thirteen, make it level like everybody else was doing in the state. So that's going to impact us positively, because it's higher than we, we expected. It's, I'm going to just roughly say three dollars and twenty-five cents. Okay, I, I, and again, I can find that out for you, uh, Bonnie, tomorrow.
Right, what I'm looking for is not the, it's not the price per gallon, it's the change in the revenue projections. Our annual revenue projections for fuel, gas tax come from PRTC. So I'm looking for how that revenue projection is changing for fiscal year nineteen and beyond. And as I understand it, there's still some question as that, as to that money, whether it's going to be kept, some of that money, whether it's going to be kept on the state level, or whether it's going to all go to localities.
No, it's not. I believe they came up with a sixty, forty. Sixty percent is going to, correct me if I'm wrong, Mark.
You know, uh, the, uh, as far as I know, there were, were no changes with the distribution formula for that. All right, uh, there was, you know, a proposal to, uh, for, you know, to keep that money at, you know, the, the windfall, or whatever you want to call it, at the state level, but as far as I know, that did not, uh, happen.
It did not, I mean, uh, a delegate, uh, hi, Thomas, Bob, had a, a say in that, and I think sort of explained it to people down there that understood now what it meant, so, um, I, I, I believe it was going to be a forty, sixty, and I'm not sure, I won't say that, but that was the last word I heard, so I can't confirm. Okay, that's even better. Thank you.
Any other questions? I'm going to do, I'm going to do one more rant, uh, on the SROs, and I, I promise this will be it. Yeah, I mentioned SROs doing, proving that they're doing a, a fine job, and I, I'm sure they are. But another thing we have not asked, or, or asked for, or seen, is what quantifies that? What, what statistical data is there that the SROs are doing what they're supposed to do, as far as in our schools and security? I mean, what, there's, I don't know of any data out there. Another issue, uh, that has been brought up repeatedly is mental health, you know? Is there mental health issues where we could put money that would do more so than, uh, having an armed person in the, regardless of whether it's SRO or armed security? You know, nobody's brought that up. We're going straight to SRO, only option, only method of securing our schools, spend one-point-four million, uh, with nothing else looked at. Another issue that I have, um, I meant to bring up earlier, is discipline in our schools. You know, at one point, um, the SROs, uh, when I was in the sheriff's office, I, and in my opinion, probably did go over, a little overboard in charging and, and getting involved in, uh, bringing criminal charges and, and getting involved in disciplining the schools. They were very aggressive at it. They were very aggressive at it. I had not seen that over the past number of years, where, and you certainly don't hear about the charges and, and stuff within the schools that you used to. You know, we've been provided no statistical data on what's being charged, if anything. I know the schools like handling a lot of their own discipline, and maybe that's some of the issue. You know, maybe the SROs do need to start criminally charging some of the stuff that goes on in our schools. You know, it's getting pretty bad when the teachers can't even discipline, other than try to send them to the office where they got to deal with them there, with the behaviors of the kids these days. So, these are, these are other factors that we need to look at, besides, you know, the one and only answer that we've been given is SROs. And that's, I'm just bringing topics for discussion at a later time, and I'll stop my rant there. We can move on. Want to say something?
I, I may, I'd like to answer part of your questions.
Sure.
Okay. And I've got that side of the fence, being on the school board, and I will tell you what, when I first got on the school board, we had tremendous gangs in our, in our high schools, especially Massaponics. There were quite a few gangs hanging out here on Massaponics and probably throughout the other schools that we had. And one of the things that the SROs did, were able to communicate with the students, and the students would virtually come to the SROs, and I know this for a fact, and we can find that data for you, and would come up and say the gangs were meeting at, at the mall, at Spotsylvania Mall. And the police would be out there at a certain time, preventing any, any battles, any fights, anybody getting killed in that thing, and everything. And, and the only thing I can tell you about having a civilian security is, is there is a relationship there. I don't think they bring the relationship as a regular police officer in this county, a Spotsylvania deputy, to know that they're not the bad guys. They are the good guys. And that, that the children, you know, depending on families, the police are just brutal and everything else of that nature. And I think you, with the SROs in our schools, have shown the students to have confidence in them, that they are good people, and they react to what they bring them and everything else of that nature, so. And as far as, do we have as much crime and stuff like, I don't think so, because of what they've done in the last six years to get rid of gangs and stuff of this nature. If you go to schools, you go to Massaponics, you know, there's no wearing of any type of symbol that would put you with a gang or anything of that nature. And they virtually went after these gangs to get them out of the schools. And I, so, maybe that's why the discipline, you may not see as much of what the police did back then, because there's just no need for it right now. And let's face it, you know, we have some great kids in this, in this county. Not all the kids are bad or anything else. You're going to have somebody that's going to bring a knife, somebody's going to bring something foolish, not even realizing it's in the backpack because they went fishing or something of that nature, and they get caught that way. I mean, that occurred quite often. So, I just want to give you that heads up on that. Okay? Thank you.
I appreciate the comments, and we'll just agree to disagree. I don't know that there's any less stuff that goes on the schools, and, you know, I was, I'm very aware of the gangs, and, you know, that we had a gang task force that was relentless on them. And I'm not, I'm not, you know, I'm sure the SROs participated to some degree, but the individual for Spotsylvania, Mr. Dumbous, Deputy Dumbouski, he took a lot of it upon himself, self, and he created the most robust list and compilation of gangs that we had in Spotsylvania that I've ever seen. But, anyway, like I said, I appreciate it. We can move on.
Mr. Chairman, the, the, there was a specific item, this was a budget point raised by a couple of board members concerning the prospect of an adjustment to the planning commission salaries, and staff has provided information to the board comparing planning commission salaries in Spotsylvania with other comparable localities. We don't need direction or opinions at this point, but wanted to make sure you're aware of that information, and had an opportunity to discuss it at the board's pleasure.
Any comments on the planning commission and their, Mr. Skinner?
I, I've brought it up before, and we shot down the other time, but, you know, when you look at the local areas, Stafford, Hanover, the size that we are and everything, our planning commission is really very, very low on the board. $4,800 a year, I think it is, vice being close to $1,000 a month at the other localities. So, that's why I've asked to bring it back, and it doesn't have to be done all in one year, and stuff. I'd like to phase it into two years if possible. But, I think we need to, to, just as we did the Evergreen and every other study, there are people that work very, very hard. I know my, my planning commissioner, Mary Lee Carter, is, works as hard as I do. We're at meetings together outside and stuff of that nature. And I'd just like to bring it up, and it doesn't have to be over this year, but I think they deserve it. They've worked hard, and I, I would like to see it go up. I'd like to see it go up this year to about $7,500, up to, what did I say? $7,500 a year, and then we can adjust next year. And I think that's a $2,700 increase.
Any other comments?
I'm sorry.
That would be per planning commissioner. Okay? On that.
Any other comments? All right.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the other discussion item that we bookmarked on the agenda has to do with the prospect of a presentation or handout at the Budget Public Hearing Thursday night at Massaponics. Passed out at the beginning of your meeting was the update to the handout that was provided last year. There's been some interest expressed in converting this handout into slides and running through those at the beginning of the gathering Thursday evening. We have the technology available at Massaponics to do that, and we were, staff was interested to learn the board's pleasure regarding this information and how, or even whether to disseminate it, you know, on Thursday night or, or otherwise.
Oh, I'm sorry. Fell asleep. Mr. Ross.
I think it's a good idea, Mark, as long as it wouldn't be greater than 15 minutes. But, I did have a couple of questions and comments about it, so we're looking through it. One is, could we put page numbers on, on it? I don't know if it's had page numbers on it in the past or not, but I think...
May all your questions be so easy, sir? Absolutely.
Yeah, that's pretty easy. On, on the top of the page that has Part III, "How Does the Average Teacher's Salary Compared to Our Neighbors?", the, the chart there with the response, I had a question on that slide as I was looking through it, where it has fiscal year 2017 actual average salary, and FY 2018 budgeted average salary seems to go down, and that didn't make sense to me. And when you look at the larger districts, it goes up. So, I didn't know if that was an error in a spreadsheet formula, or if that could, or why that is. Everybody tracking the slide?
Is the...
Yeah, so like, for instance, the top, Caroline, it has 48,46486. Is that the one page you're on? And that's for fiscal year 17, and when you go to 18, it's down to 46,992. It goes down for each one of the, the areas, and it didn't make sense to me why it would be doing that.
The information was provided from the schools. We'll have to talk to them and see. My assumption is, it's based, it's an average, so it's taking the total compensation divided by teachers, and there are more teachers, and so that is causing the average to go down, but I don't know.
And maybe that there are younger teachers or newer teachers in some localities or other variables that we're not, we're not seeing.
I guess when you see the top chart, I agree with you, but then when you look at the bottom chart, they all go up. I know those are bigger, larger districts, of which sometimes we compare, like, I think, for instance, last year, we compared well with Virginia Beach and...
Yeah, I mean, there, there are factors, including what Mark mentioned, as far as turnover, of, if an older or more tenured teacher retired, and they've replaced it with a, a younger one. Also, some of those other localities, I'm assuming maybe don't add, aren't growing at the rate others are, they may have a, not be adding new teachers at the rate others are.
Okay.
These are just, I mean, honestly...
I just, I just question it, because every single school in the surrounding district average salary has gone down from actual 17 to budgeted, and I mean, how could we, we, the proposed budgeted, I think, has a 4% pay raise in it right now for our schools, and yet it goes down by $3,000? And then every single school in the bottom table goes up in price?
The three, the last two don't, yeah.
Well, yeah, you're right. They don't. Okay.
But, I mean, we can certainly...
If we could just double-check that number, because it kind of jumped out at me. And then, this, the one with the, so, two pages later, where it says, "Do you have exit interview surveys?" I was just, it has the unknown and retirement, there's no percent on those two. I'm guessing they're around 20%.
Well, I'll get the update from the schools, no problem.
Okay. That's the only thing I had on the handout.
If I may, on the, on the first slide, Mr. Ross was, had mentioned with the surrounding areas, and then we go to the larger districts, just at, at first glance, when I look at these numbers, the reasoning that I can see possibly is that we, it shows that our surrounding districts are possibly losing tenured teachers to larger districts, and that would support that, that, if that's what's happening, that would support these numbers, that we're losing folks and having to hire new, younger teachers at lower salaries to these higher-paying districts.
Any other questions, comments?
Also, it could, could be that if, if you're hiring new positions, chances are, those would be entry-level positions or lower-level positions, and then that could cause your, you know, and not just teacher turnover, but like, the schools want to hire, you know, what, 60 new, new teachers or so over the next few years. You know, if those come in at kind of the lower level, that would drive their average salary down without, you know, affecting any of those that are experienced.
Mr. Chair, there is a good percent that's unknown on that slide about why they left. Mr. Marshall kind of addresses that. Relocation and retirement seem to be two big chunks there. I'm guessing around 40% combined, compared, depending on what that figure is. Do we need a motion at all for staff to present this before, at the beginning of the public hearing? Are you guys good to go?
I'd, I'd appreciate a motion, as well as a bit, I mean, looking at the, at the data, the, the chart at the bottom of the first page, that I would suggest that to convert this into slides that would be legible. It will be more than, perhaps more than one slide per page. We'll do our best to make it legible and to present the information efficiently and can also have it as a handout.
I can make a motion for that, but I think whatever's easiest with staff to do, I don't want to put an extra burden on staff to convert this into a slide deck, PowerPoint, and then, I do think it's reasonable to keep it below 15 minutes.
All right.
So, I'll make a motion that at the beginning of the public hearing, staff present this to the public, no longer than 15 minutes, in whatever format is easiest for staff to do.
We have a discussion.
Go ahead, Mr. Skinner.
So, Mr. Ross, what is the, the purpose is that they, you think it's better for them not to read this or have it? And because, I, I think one thing is, keep in mind that we have advertised a higher rate than we ever have in the past over the equalization rate. And so, I'm hoping to see that the, the people who have said, "Hey, give us a chance to come out and talk and explain why we think we need a higher tax rate," some of that nature, hopefully will have more of a turnout than we had in the last couple of years. And, you know, sometimes we've been there, you know, I remember one time we got there pretty close to midnight before we got out. That was quite a while back, but what is, is, can't we just hand this out and let them look at it? Because if we try to explain everything on it, is that going to take more than 15 minutes?
My motion's 15 minutes or less, so they'd have to cut, cut it off if they get to that point. And I, why I'm asking that it be presented is because last year, very few handouts got handed out, and a lot of people still came up and spoke at the public hearing and said things that were not accurate compared to what we presented in this, this handout last year. I believe that's my experience the last several years, is that, you know, somebody will put out some information that's bad, and that gets repeated at the public hearings, it's not even accurate. So, in the effort of transparency, I think we should present it. Here's what the facts are, and not take a lot of time, and that's why I'm limiting it 15, ideally be 10, but that's my purpose in doing it, is just so we can get that out in the open, put it up front. You know, there's a lot of times you'd like to, I think we've even discussed this in the past, like, we'd like to answer the questions sometimes, especially if the bad, if there's inaccurate information put out, we'd like a chance to, at the end, say something, but this just puts it up front.
Thank you. Mr. Yakubowski.
Sort of to piggyback on that, there's a lot of information in this thing. So, how are we going, I mean, what, what are we trying to highlight to the public? Is it the percentage of the budget that goes to the different services? Is it, is it what exactly? Because I, I don't want to put it on the, the staff to start running through, and they get down to page three and a half, and, you know, they, they stop. And, you know, page four explains what three and a half, what, you know? I, I don't, I'm all for explaining as much as possible, but I'm almost wondering if there needs to be a, sort of a, a basic budget explanation, like, the general fund. What is the general fund? What does that do? How, you know, the, the, in, in one section in here, the school transfer is 53.6, then two pages over, education is 45 cents. So, you know, people might look at that and go, "Well, why is that debt? And that is that?" You know, what are you trying? So, I think that if we can explain what we're trying to do without overloading, I don't mind giving out all the information, because I'm sure there's lots of people that would like to look at all of it and, and see, but I, I would like staff almost to have a, a very shortened version of something that they can present without opening up a whole nother line of discussion and questions.
Just, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I would like to respond. Mr. Yakubowski's comment cued the thought, and, and Mr. Ross, perhaps this is what you were asking for in the beginning, is not so much a, a detailed explanation of the contents of the handout, but more a brief summary or explanation of what the handout will show you if you look at it.
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
I, I agree. And I think, I mean, because I think that's where my disconnect was, because I was like, this can be done in, this can be done in five minutes, maybe, but 10, and I know, he thought it might be longer, but...
Okay, so, and an explanation, this is what the handout shows, page by page, and explain very briefly the intent of the communication, and that will help people make sense of it.
More than 15 minutes, with those things highlighted, and, and provide handouts too, so that they can have that to, to look at.
Okay. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. And so, we're not trying to explain this to them, we're just trying to say, "This is what it is."
Right.
And if you have any questions, call Mark.
Just thinking, call the chairman.
Could we add Mark's cell phone to page one?
All right. We have a motion by Mr. Ross for the, for a presentation, I think he said 10 minutes ideally, but 15 minutes max, with an explanation of the handout. Yes. Amy, do you think you got all that? All right. Mr. Yakubowski.
Aye.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Aye.
Mr. Ross.
Aye.
Mr. Skinner.
Aye.
Mr. Marshall.
Aye.
Dr. Trampy.
Aye.
Chair's eye.
Mr. Chairman, board members, that brings us to the closed session portion of our evening. If there's nothing further to discuss in the Budget Work Session.
Close session.
Close session.
All right, Mr. Chair, this is, this will be your resolution to adjourn into closed meeting, whereas the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors desires to adjourn into closed meeting for discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, to motion salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body, specifically a board appointee for the Citizen Budget Review Committee, Building Department staff, Economic Development and Tourism staff, and Utilities Department staff. And whereas Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors desires to adjourn into closed meeting for consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation, where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating and litigating posture of the public body, specifically Spotsylvania Historical Association, Inc. versus Board Supervisors of Spotsylvania County, case number CL fifteen one zero four five, Roger and Mary Williams et al. versus Board Supervisors of Spotsylvania County, case number CL fifteen one zero nine four, and Roger and Mary Williams et al. v. Board Supervisors, case number CL fifteen one zero nine five. And whereas Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors desires to adjourn into closed meeting for consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters, requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel, specifically regarding board policies and procedures, and specifically regarding the Public Private Education Facilities and Infrastructure Act. And whereas Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors desires to adjourn into closed meeting for discussion of the award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds, including interviews of bidders or offers, and discussion of the terms or scope of such contract, where discussion in open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body, specifically a contract for recreational services. And whereas pursuant to Virginia Code, Section 2.23711A1, 7, 8, and 29, such discussions may occur in closed meeting. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors does hereby authorize discussion of the aforementioned matters.
So moved.
Um, Mr. Skinner, I'll shake it up a little bit.
Aye.
Mr. Marshall.
Aye.
Dr. Trampy.
Aye.
Mr. Yakubowski.
Aye.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Aye.
Mr. Ross.
Aye.
Chair's eye.
In accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.23712D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors hereby returns to open meeting and certifies by roll call vote that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion to convene in a closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting.
Mr. Skinner.
Aye.
Mr. Marshall.
Aye.
Dr. Trampy.
Aye.
Mr. Yakubowski.
Aye.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Aye.
Mr. Ross.
Aye.
Chair's eye. Mr. Cole, you had something?
Yeah, just real quickly, I wanted to get guidance from the board on our, our voting, the board voting system. I've gotten a couple of different input from different board members. Some say they just want to continue with the voice votes, others say they would like a voting system. We could go back, real easy, back to Novus voting system, except we would have a dedicated iPad type thing. You wouldn't have to use your, just for voting, wouldn't have to use your, your PC or laptop for the voting. You know, it, so that, you know, it would be recorded in Novus. If, if that's not satisfactory, then we would have to go do a procurement for a, a new voting system. But if you'd just give us some guidance as to whether or not you want to stay with voice vote, try Novus, or start working on a new procurement.
Mr. Ross.
So, Mark, what's the difference, we were using Novus and we were voting, why, why doesn't that work?
There, there were some issues with some members, that if you, if you did it on your, your PC or your laptop, and then you went out of the window and went back in, it didn't work right. So, what, to try to fix that and address that, we would have just a dedicated, like a little iPad or of some sort.
Sure.
You know, that would be used just for voting, and it would stay here, it's not something you'd take home, it would be like a, a voting pad that, that would be here for the meetings, and you could use that.
Sounds like that's the least costly.
That's the least costly, if you wanted to go back to a voting system. Of course, the cheapest would be just stick with voice votes, but it's up to you all, whatever you want to do.
Was, does this, Amy, I guess this would be a question for you, and sorry to put you in the hot seat. Does the system work for you in what you need it to do, so you can log everything and, okay, easily? It's not a cluster for you?
Doable.
Well, maybe, I mean, I just want something that's gonna be easy for you and what, because you, I mean, our part is easy. You hit a button and it shows you voted and how you voted. You're the ones that have it documented there and do the more technical stuff. I, I'd want something that's gonna work very smoothly for you and what you have to do, because I think a lot of, everything you put in there is critical as far as going back and, and getting it and pulling it and all that, so.
There's things that Jane is working on with the vendor in that arena to try and make that a smoother transition, to record. It doesn't have a lot of flexibility, so when the agenda moves around, we don't have the ability to change that. So, we're currently working with them to try and streamline that.
Now, the, the drawback would be that if you make a, a motion that's on something that's not on the agenda, she would need time to input that before you could vote on it, where if you stick with a voice system, you don't, there is no delay on, on that. But it, it's, like I said, it's up to the board whether, how they want to proceed.
Can I just bring up one thing?
Go ahead, Mr. Yakubowski.
Other places vote, can we just ask somebody else how they do it?
Yes.
Just get their information, and then, I mean, if we can find out who, where they bought it from and what works best, just take a little bit of time and do that, and then, and we'll be done.
Dr. Trampy.
I'd prefer to do it through Novus. Unless a cheaper way other than a voice vote could be found.
Well, we can always do a little green, yellow, and red light, and then that can be displayed up here, and Amy can look down that way and what, I guess.
Well, again, I've got conflict.
I know.
You know, so.
Anybody want to make a motion or raise hands on how we want to do this?
Well, unless you all say otherwise, we'll try Novus out with the iPads and see how that works for a few meetings. And, and again, we may have to work out some bugs the first couple of meetings, so, with any system that we get. So, you know, I, unless you all say otherwise, we'll proceed with the Novus option and, and see how that works.
Mr. Chair, one quick question, will you be able to, if we go with Novus, will the vote be shown on TV?
Yeah, yeah, we'll be able to do that.
I'm fine, thank you.
All right.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome, I think. Motion adjourned.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion adjourned by Mr. Skinner, all ayes.
We meet again Thursday, Mass upon X High School, March 29th, 6:30 PM.